Good morning. The committee of the whole meeting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board for Thursday, November 5th, 2020 will now come to order. Some procedural announcements. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the Professional Development Center meeting room space. Once the capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screening before entering the meeting room. The committee of the whole meeting scheduled for November 5th, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on board docs located on the school board website, ebrschools.org backslash about. The meeting is now called to order and I will perform the invocation and I will ask Mr. Tatman to, I mean Ms. Ware Jackson, I'm sorry, to do the pledge of allegiance. Would you please bow your heads? Our heavenly Father, on this day, we give you thanks for all of those who make our efforts possible. Those include all of the teachers and staff at our schools, the cafeteria workers who feed our families, the cleaning crews who keep us safe, the bus drivers who transport our students, their most precious cargo. We also thank the parents and students for their time and efforts into furthering their education. And we thank the central office staff and all other staff members who do all of their work to keep all of the machinery working to make things possible. We also thank you for this wonderful day that we have today and we pray that we can all come together for the best work and wishes and outcomes for our students. In your name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Here.
District 3, Vice President Howard. District 1, Mr. Blue. District 2, Mr. Lannis. District 4, Ms. Collins.
Present.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Here.
District 6, Ms. Dyson. District 8, Ms. Bernard. District 9, Mr. Tatman.
Present.
We have a call, thank you. Next will be item C1, update from the superintendent.
Thank you, President Goday. Meal delivery service for virtual students. This week, EBR Child Nutrition Program began delivering meal boxes to students who are 100% virtual learning. Meals will be delivered once a week, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Meals are not left on the doorstep. Someone must sign for this package. Deliveries will only be made to addresses in East Baton Rouge Parish School attended zones. Virtual families that complete the meal delivery survey will receive an email with the date and time of the expected delivery window. Meal boxes include a combination of bread, cereal, frozen entries, canned fruit and vegetables, and self-stable milk. Meals will include five lunches, five breakfasts, and five snacks. Anyone who's interested in further information, please visit our website at ebrschools.org. COVID testing. Partly the Lake Centers, health centers and schools are offering COVID-19 testing for our staff and EBR school system. The results of the tests are normally available within 24 hours. The clinic will bill each employee's health insurance. Individuals who need to be tested must contact one of the seven health clinics to set up a telehealth appointment for an evaluation prior to testing. Contact information for the health centers are located on EBR website and I would like to mention the seven locations, Broadmoor High School, Glasgow Middle, Northeast High School, Scottlinville Pre-Engineer Magnet School, Glen Oaks High School, Asturuma High School, and Westdale Middle. Veterans Day is nearly approaching. We are excited to announce that the East Baton Rouge Parish School System, through a multi-departmental collaboration, is presenting a program to honor all EBR employees, current employees, who are military veterans on Veteran Day, November 11th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. This will be a virtual program due to COVID-19 restrictions. East Baton Rouge Parish Schools Parish employees who are veterans will ask to complete their information and send it to the Human Office of Research by October 30th. We look forward to this amazing celebration. College Board Names Top African-American Scholars. Last spring, an invitation was extended to African-American juniors who scored at the top 2.5% on the PST and the National Mayor Scholar Qualifying Test. Test cases submitted extensive application. The College Board evaluated submitted applications, choosing African-American scholars. The College Boards have recognized four seniors from Baton Rouge Magnet High Schools as the top African-American scholars. The students are Morla Kai Logan, Alexis Taylor, Jonathan Thomas, and Reagan Hamilton. Please join me in honoring these students. These students are not here this evening, but I just want to take our opportunity to recognize the amazing accomplishments of these young individuals. Next, we will have a presentation from staff. Typically, in November of each year, staff will provide an accountability update on new schools and district performance scores. There will be no district performance scores released this year due to COVID school closures at the end of the last school year. We didn't want to lose this opportunity to provide you with updates on our current accountability status and new data as it has been released last spring. Tonight's presentation will be the first in a series of updates on teaching and learning to show how our focus areas are addressing achievement gaps to better prepare students for the statewide assessment. Mrs. Okonski will start us off with an accountability update, followed by executive directors from each of our supported cohorts to discuss how staff is supporting schools' focus on data-driven instruction practices. Ms. Okonski.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, everyone. It's kind of very familiar to be with you tonight in November, talking about district and school performance scores, but unfamiliar that we don't have a new district performance score or school performance scores to report. So tonight, as Mr. Smith said, you're getting a double dose. You're getting two for the price of one. You're going to get some accountability updates, but then my colleagues are going to tag-team with me to talk about what we're seeing in the data and how we're addressing those gaps that we know exist because of early school closures last spring. So if we can go to the next slide, we're going to talk past, present, and future tonight. We're going to talk past, historical SPS, and those indicators, and how we did, because some of you have requested some detailed data comparing different school configurations and different cohorts. So we'll dig a little deeper into our past school performance scores. We're going to talk present. We're going to talk since school closures last spring. What data has been released? What do we have that's new and current? So we'll dig a little deeper into the two high school sources of new data. The last thing we're going to do, as I said, I'll pass the baton to my colleagues who are going to talk about the future. What have we learned from the diagnostic and interim assessments that we've given so far in this school year? And how can we take that data to push our students forward into this spring's testing cycle? So if we'll go to the next slide. As I said, we're going to dig deeper into two different buckets tonight. We're going to look at data or scores by school configuration type, and we're going to look by network. What do I mean by that? School configuration type, we'll break it down for you, elementary, middle, high, and combination schools. Because those of you familiar with the Louisiana Department of Education reports know that those combination schools or high schools that dip down into some middle grades, we have two of them, Asturuma and Northeast High. So when you see that category, that's who that's referencing. We're also going to break things down per your request by network. We'll talk about Innovation Network schools. We'll talk about non-Innovation Network schools. We'll talk about the CIR schools, the 32 that we have that are DNF, that are on the list for comprehensive intervention required. We'll talk about our charter schools. And in some sections where it applies, we'll talk about our alternative schools, but we need to keep in mind that they switched to a new formula last year. So it's hard to group in their data for the comparisons. So if we can go to the next slide, just to refresh your memory of where we stand from fall of 2019, this is how the district compares to the state and the major indicators for district performance score reporting. As a reminder, we did show top 10 level increases for the last two years historically. And so we know that we have some work to do and we can identify the areas, particularly in assessment where we need improvement, but this gives us our baseline moving forward. If we can go to the next slide. So you have this in front of you, and I'll ask you to kind of rest your eyes on this and I'll explain the different colors and categories for you. This is our letter grade distribution for the active schools currently in our accountability system. We didn't include closed schools in this data. We closed three schools in our LEA since this has been released, Broadmoor Middle, North Banks, and Children's Charter. Okay? So looking at this, this is your grade level, grade distribution. The blue line indicates your district averages. So there are 10 As in the district, but when you break it down by elementary, middle, and high, you see that six of the 10, or 60% of the As are elementary, 20% are middle, and 20% are high. When you go down to the B category, you see that all of them are elementary. You go down to the C, and you can see the same pattern develop with 19 of the Cs being elementary. Then you see your middle school, your high school, and the red and orange and so forth. So those are your breakdowns by school configuration type for your letter grade distribution. Now, it looks a little different if we look at it by cohort or by network. So if we can go to the next slide. I think it's easier if you start at the bottom. At the bottom, you see your grade level distribution by the total LEA, the 77 sites that we're talking about tonight. You see the same breakdown that I just gave you in a different way. If you move up one, you see the CIR schools. And you see that breakdown for your letter grades. By definition, your CIR schools are DNF, but you see we have two Cs. So they're on track to exit. It takes two years to get out. So we have two that should be out the next time we have a public release. There's your Innovation Network. I'm sorry, you have six CIR that are Cs. Your Innovation Network had two of them. Moving up, you see the breakdown for your non-Innovation Network, your charter schools, non-charter, and then alternative. If we can go to the next slide, this breaks down how we improved or how we grew. And I broke it down for you a couple of different ways. If you start with me over on the left side, that pie chart, 52 schools in the district grew academically, 52. 32 of them were elementary, 11 were middle, eight were high, one was a combination. If you go to the bottom half of that left-hand side, 11 of the schools that grew were Innovation Network, 36 were non-Innovation Network, five were charter schools, and 24 out of the 32 CIR schools that we're going to talk about in a few minutes grew. Over on the right-hand side, you see growth by full letter grades. 13 schools increased to letter grade. 10 were elementary, one middle, two high. Looking at the bottom, if you break it down by network type, nine were non-innovation schools, three were Innovation Network, and one was a charter school. So let's look on the next slide as to how much they grew. So we're talking about those 50-plus schools that grew, which averages to about 73% of the LEA. The average gain in the LEA was by 2.4 points. Again, I think it's easier if you started at the bottom of this graph and work your way up. There are your 77 sites that grew an average of 2.4. If I pull out just the DNF sites that are currently active, they grew at a rate of 3.6. Your Innovation Network grew at a rate of 4.1. Your non-Innovation Network schools, those are your 64 that are your A, Bs, and Cs, grew at a rate of 1.6. And then above it, you can see the breakout by elementary, middle, high, and your combination schools. And so on each bar, I gave you the number of schools that we're looking at for their average growth. Moving to the next slide, we're going to look at our CIR schools, because that's where we want to spend a lot of our attention, and those schools that are declared comprehensive intervention required. As I mentioned earlier, you have 32 that are active right now. Of the 32, 34% or 11 of them are on target, on track to exit. But let's look at who those 32 are, all the way to the left. 20 of them are elementary, three of them are middle, eight are high, one is a combination. If you look below that chart, you can see the breakdown by charter, non-Innovation Network, and Innovation Network. But let's look on who's on track to exit. As I said, they're 34%, about a third of them, on track to exit, because it takes two years to get out. Of the 11 that are on track to exit, 10 are elementary, one is a high school. It's McKinley High with the grad rate. So they had a successful grad rate that pushes them over the edge. Your breakdown is you have two charter schools with the yes in that column, you have five non-innovation schools, and four Innovation Network schools. It works out mathematically that about 31% of your Innovation Network is eligible to exit if they continue on this trajectory, and about 31% of your non-Innovation Network is on track to exit if they continue with this trend. So let's look, we talk a lot about progress, and we know that over 93% of our district schools scored an A, B, or C in progress. So if we can go to the next slide, we're going to focus and narrow in on the schools that scored an A in progress, because that's what we want to see for everyone. We have 39 schools in the LEA that scored an A in progress. 34 of the 39 were elementary, three of the 39 were middle, two of the 39 were high school. Of those 39, nine were DNF schools. Of those DNF schools, five were non-Innovation Network schools, three was an Innovation Network school, and one was a district authorized charter school. Moving to the next slide, we'll talk about top gains honors. You may recall from last fall, we led the state in the number of schools earning top gains. We were the top tier across the state in the total number of schools, 27. Of the 27, 25 were elementary, one was middle, two were high. Of those 27, three were DNF schools or CIR schools with that label. Two were non-Innovation Network schools, one was an Innovation Network school. So that breaks down for you the past, where we're coming off of the last accountability cycle, and where we stand with our schools with letter grades. And we know, we have a good pulse of where they were. So let's talk about new data that we have now since this release. If we can go to the next section, we're going to look at two major buckets. Unfortunately, we don't have data from K-8 assessments from last spring. The only assessment data we have from last school year is ACT, which is honestly, folks, your senior roster. It's the highest score that a senior gets. So in many cases, it was the score that the student probably earned in their junior year or some of them even before the senior year. The other bucket that we have is AP. Before we dig into these two, I need to let you know that when the state released this data to us, there was a huge asterisk on it with bold. Both of these cycles were interrupted by COVID. With ACT, we have many seniors who take that March retest. It was canceled. And while ACT eventually came back online and provided opportunities in the summer so they could get it in before the FAFSA deadline or before the TOPS deadline, we know many of them didn't. And many of them who had a score might have taken it again, but just simply didn't because we were still in Phase 1 at that point or Phase 2. And then they just, we didn't see the numbers turn out for those other testing cycles. AP is a little similar but different. They all got to take the AP test, but they took it at home. And I don't know if you read across the news, personal anecdote here, it happened at my house, AP crashed on some people in the middle of a test. And so it became a struggle in perseverance for many of our students. We're proud of those who persevered and took the test, but you'll see, or I'll have this showed, I don't know if I have it on this one, but if I broke down the data historically, we didn't have the numbers that we've had historically taking these tests. So I just want to tell you, in looking at the data that we're about ready to see from last spring, there's huge asterisks there. So, but that being said, our ACT composite is 17.9. It declined slightly, I'll show you the trend. And then our advanced placement, we had a 43.1%, and that's a plus-four increase in tests with a score of three or higher. And then we rank at a 40.1%. That's an 8.1% increase in students who scored a three or higher. That's a huge gain for us in one year. So again, we want to commend and congratulate our students who persevered to take this test last spring in the midst of everything else going on, and their teachers who nagged them to take these tests in the middle of everything else going on. Yes, sir.
Quick question.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at the ACT composite score of 17.9, and we, and most people in Louisiana know that ACT is like our golden key to access TOPS, dual enrollment, all of these things. And the trend historically is that the ACT composite score is low for our students. Is there any intentional things that we are doing? Because curriculum doesn't really align with ACT curriculum.
Right.
It's like you're really teaching kids two separate standards to ensure that they're ready and prepared for the next level. So is there anything intentional from a district standpoint that we are doing to ensure that our students at ACT prepare?
A couple of things. And I have a couple more slides on ACT. And I'm going to ask that, I'm not going to fully answer your question, because Ms. Semino and Mr. Nekes have a slide that's going to better address your question, but surface from an accountability standpoint, let me tell you a couple of things. Last year, we had ACT, ACT come in right before COVID. And in this room, they modeled for them, the scores, the schools still get their scores on an old-fashioned CD with those subgroup reports and such. Taking the district CD, the ACT staff, the national staff modeled for five members of each school's leadership team, how to break down the data for your school data at tables. And so each high school had a table, curriculum and instruction and PD and accountability staff shared a table to break it down with the district data. That was session one. The next session is those five members were broken, excuse me, were broken out by cohorts and by content area. So then they went into breakout sessions. ELA went into one room, math went into one room, and so forth. And they spent two other sessions breaking down their data, Mr. Howard, to drill down in what standards were missing so that C and I could hear the conversation and help them with curriculum mapping. That was last year. This year, we are accustomed to those old-fashioned, we all had them, workbooks for ACT prep, right? COVID kind of killed that for us. So one of the things we did with our CARES Act fund is we went digital with that. And so we bought a platform for ACT practice available to every high school, including the charters in our LEA, to be able to have access to that ACT practice material. So those are two things district-wide, at the district level. Ms. Semino is going to come back and talk about some more things that they're pushing in at the school level.
And could I add, Andrea, you asked an excellent question, Mr. Howard, about the curriculum alignment. And really, when you start talking about ACT, you need to really start looking at what's happening in middle school, especially around eighth grade math. And one of the tasks that I did ask staff to do is to go back and look at the standards that are being addressed in eighth grade math, how they address in Algebra I. And if we need to make some adjustments after assessment, after, you know, leap assessment, maybe we need to go back and make certain that those students in eighth grade, we start addressing the algebra standards a little bit earlier. Or if high schools need to pull kids in some type of bridge program before schools start to kind of connect those dots before they get into high school. And also looking at the courses that students are taking that will prepare them for ACT by the time they become juniors.
Right. And I just wanted to just bring it out, because, I mean, while we see a composite score of 17.9 as a universal composite score, when you break that number down from subgroup data and students not attending selective admission schools, it gets really scary. And so we're going to have ACT as like the golden standard to access and really create opportunity for education within our district. Like, we have to make sure that we're doing a lot of intentional things to make sure that our numbers are increasing, and not just increasing as an overall collective number, but when you break it down for African-American students and Latino students and female students, it gets really, really scary. And if this is going to be the gateway, we just got to make sure that we're doing our best to prepare students to access the things that they need to be successful. So that's just wanted to bring that up.
Mr. Howard, our next couple of slides address exactly what you're mentioning there. If we can go to the next one, you'll see the historical trends. You alluded to the state and district average and the trends there. Notice over the last couple of years how we have really mirrored state trends. You see, they're up two or three, we're up two or three. They're down two or three or four, we're down two or three or four. It's very interesting to watch how this needle has moved. And if you notice, since 2017, the needle, as Mr. Howard mentioned, has continued to move down. And to Mr. Smith's point, we have to start looking at course selection, we have to start looking at those underlying clauses as to why. Mr. Howard, you mentioned subgroups. The next slide breaks down major subgroups. So you can see the breakdown by subgroup. I've got the district and state comparison there for you. Remember, this is the highest score earned by a senior on the class of 2020's roster. There was one increase for us, that was the Asian population, the Asian subgroup. The box tells you that they are outperforming their peers across the state for two consecutive years. Our African-American subgroup strongly outperformed their peers last year. They held on for the second consecutive year, but you notice that gap has closed and it's barely. So to Mr. Howard's point, that is some intentional work that we'll be doing around these subgroups. The next slide has a breakdown for you by school. Some of you wanted to see it by network. So the purple shades are Innovation Network schools, the orange shades are your CIR schools, the school with a CIR label. You can see how each school did. Because we have a three-year trend, I gave you the three-year trend, because ACT is something, one of the few indicators that we do have from last spring. And you can compare it there to the district cycle and the state cycle to the right. Moving on to AP data, just quickly. Amazingly enough, I almost, we got this AP data in the middle of the last hurricane, and so I still had power and I kind of closed my eyes, Ms. Ware Jackson, as I pressed the button, because I didn't know what I was going to get. And I was pleasantly surprised to see these pluses, because as a parent of a senior, I knew the struggles that kids had last spring taking these tests. But as I said, we showed percentage overall increases in the number of tests with qualifying scores and the number of students. And it's more important, the tests, yes, because sometimes we have kids taking three or four tests, but the number of students is equally or more important, because we're giving, as Mr. Howard noted, we're giving access to more and more students. So let's look on the next slide of who we're giving access to. And so I think that we still have a lot of work to do in this area, but historically in AP, there've been some subgroups that we haven't moved the needle on. And so when I got able in that hurricane time to dig deeper into this, it was very exciting to see that three subgroups that we've historically been challenged of in this area all grew. If you look at our African-American subgroup, our economically disadvantaged subgroup, and our males, because our females are showing up for this test at a much higher rate than our high school male students. And we have to get more male participation in advanced placement coursework. But if you take a look at it, you'll see that all three of them grew across the board, not just in the number of tests taken, again, one student racking up multiple tests, but in the number of students with the qualifying scores. So we saw a consistent rate of an increase in participation, and we want to continue to see this. You all may remember that over the years, the Louisiana Department of Education has continued to celebrate us and commend us for growing our African-American participation rates on this test. And we saw that trend continue. We have increased those rates by over 300, 400% over the last three to five years. And so that we have our NEMCE partnership through ExxonMobil and other initiatives that have really helped us to do that. That being said, if you turn the slide for me, we ranked first in a number of categories across the state. I have an equal slide that I shared with the principals on our call with them of second and third place finishes. But just as important as leading the state in the total number of tests or the total number of scores with a three plus, again, is that subgroup lead. We led the state in categories for economically disadvantaged students and African-American students, once again. And I think that's something that we all need to be proud of there, even though we recognize there's work to do. This was across the board. Many high schools shown gains here, but I would be remiss if I did not call out two. So if we can go to the next slide. Baton Rouge Magnet High School led in several areas. I've picked out the top four where they were number one. Just as important, their little sister, their little brothers catching up to them. Liberty High finished in the top 15 in every category where Baton Rouge High finished first. And so since Liberty's been on the scene the last couple of years, we've seen them emerge, and now they're closing those gaps, and every year, they move a little bit higher in those rankings. These are hundreds of high schools across the state. And so that we have two in the top 15 is exceptional, and they should be commended for their work there. So before I pass the baton to my colleagues, there are a lot of questions So before I pass the baton to my colleagues, there are a lot of questions about accountability. If we can go to the next slide. And the department did a great job of putting out an FAQ document for parents on accountability. The two most common questions I've screenshotted for you. Will there be a school performance score for last school year? No, there will not. But look at the second one. Will there be any changes to the accountability formula? And what we get in this answer is that the department is researching and monitoring, and so that they will work with districts to see if anything needs to be brought to Bessie. So we're in a wait and see mode. We are operating as though we are taking a test and there will be a score next year. We do know that there are many concerns out there besides COVID, hurricane days, and other disruptions in the testing cycle and in this school year. Over to the right-hand side, they've published a list for you all as community members and parents as to what data won't be public for last school year. So that anybody who goes to their data library, goes to School Finder looking for something, you can see where it's not going to be there. I put the link here because I've shared this a couple of times with principals in our weekly call, asking them to push this out at their parent nights. But I know sometimes you guys get questions from constituents, so I wanted you to know where to be able to find it so that you could share it as appropriate. And then they keep revising it. So the last revision was September twenty-fifth, and so this is an as-of date. And so we'll continue to keep you posted as we get some new updates from them. So that's it for me. I'm going to go to the next slide simply to tell you that I gave you past data, summative data. I kind of updated you as to where we got, what we've gotten since last spring. But now I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues who are going to talk about formative data, the data that we're using to drive the current instructional practices for this year. They're going to center their conversation with you around three main areas that are essential to all professional learning communities. So I'm going to turn it over, I believe, to Ms. Brister.
Ms. Dyson.
Have a question.
Yes, before you leave, Ms. Okonski, thank you for preparing this for us. It's good information. I, I'm sure you're aware, in, in the beginning of this school year, and I guess I'm more concerned about this school year than I was from March to May.
Yeah.
Except for the ACT retake. But this year, I think, has much, many more challenges.
Yes, ma'am.
And so one of the things that was district mandated for all of the high schools, except for the two that are the highest achieving, were all mandated to move to a four-four schedule.
Right.
And there's a lot of concern with amongst employees and parents who are very concerned because that, they feel their, their children, our students, weren't allowed to take as many dual and AP classes where they were taking multiple ones, and if they wanted to stay on the football team and that kind of thing. So there's a lot of questions out there for that. And the, the big fear is that when this, if we are receiving scores and they were receiving points
Mm-hmm.
last year and for years, and then this year, they will lose some of those points.
Right.
It's a big concern. And also, I guess, they really want assurance from us that they will be able to revert back to the AB block schedule for next year, this coming August. And they don't want to be mandated to stay this way.
Before Mr. Nekeis answers that, because he, he works more closely with the cohort on those areas, I will tell you that from accountability standpoint, we are supporting those students who are currently enrolled in those courses for the assessments at the appropriate time. So students who are in EOC courses this fall, we are supporting them. We're preparing for, usually our fall cycle is a retest, but we're preparing for initial testers and the numbers
Right.
from an accountability standpoint. But I know he'll address
So some of them will have taken it in the first half of the year, and they'll, they will have months before they take their test.
For the AP, yes, but not for the EOC.
The AP, the AP. So they're very concerned in that lapse of time, like a summer lapse. And I know we're doing things, but they want to know next year that this isn't going to happen to them again.
Let me give some context. What? Yep, sure. Let me give some context to the question and then give you an answer as well. When we met with principals leading up to the end of the spring, we asked them about, we knew that everything this year was going to be difficult and different. It was a unanimous decision made by the principal's cohort to switch to a four-by-four schedule. Really, we anticipate, this is only this year. We do expect to revert back to an eight-period AB schedule next year. The reason we did that was because students could concentrate on four courses per semester, not eight or seven or eight during. And teachers also only had to deal with, you know, three preps a semester, not six. So again, there were a lot of logistical things, and there's pros and cons to everything. Anecdotally, or statistically, actually, not anecdotally, we actually set records this year for dual enrollment and AP enrollments. So normally, we only have about six hundred and fifty students in dual enrollment. This year, we have over twelve hundred. We doubled. Same thing with our APs, stayed steady. We have over eight thousand AP seats. So we don't anticipate any type of decline in that.
Can we get that broken down by school side?
Absolutely. Right now, Woodlawn's offering, again, throughout of students, school history, they take courses. This year, they have about thirty-three percent of their kids in a dual enrollment or AP course. Some schools have as high as ninety percent. So again, it's part of the school's master schedule, it's part of their planning, and all the other things they may offer. If they offer ten times the courses, it gets more difficult.
Yes.
So we do anticipate going back to the eight-period AB for next year, so I don't think that'll be an issue. But we definitely wanted to focus kids' concentrations and teachers and not really get too wide during the year. Yes, ma'am.
I, I know that, and I think they realize there were pros and cons. It's just that if we get scores this year, I'm concerned that those that we're offering a lot of them and students were taking up on multiple, I'm afraid of losing those points. And so are a lot of people from, that reach out to me.
Yeah. From a point standpoint, remember, for example, a student who takes one dual enrollment course and passes it, or twenty, you get the same amount of points. So it's really not, it's not an accountability issue, but we have increased that.
And the AP?
AP's the same. If they take one AP course and pass it, and they, you know, make less than a three, they get a hundred and ten points. If they make a three or above, they get a hundred and fifty. They could take ten AP courses or one. It doesn't really matter.
Good. Thanks for that clarification.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Nekeis and Ms. Dyson. Mr. Nekeis and I have discussed about reverting back to traditional schedule for next year. I don't know how many of you guys are old enough to remember the old Clint Eastwood movie, The Good, The Bad, The Ugly. When looking at data, sometimes you have to deal with the good, the bad, the ugly. And so often, when we present data to you guys, we don't have an opportunity to share with you what are the next steps. And so tied to Andrea's presentations, I've asked the some elementary executive directors to come talk with you guys and share what we're doing to address the data that you just seen. Ms. Brister.
Good evening, Mr. Smith, Board President Goday, Vice President Howard, members of the board. This evening, we proudly represent over forty-one thousand students, seventy-three-plus school leaders, district support staff, as well as our colleagues, the other executive directors of elementary, middle, and high school programs. Can you just play the next? There we go. Here on this slide, you can see the number of students that we have in both the face-to-face and virtual environments, along with the number of students who fall in specific subgroups. Our leaders continue to work to ensure that students are receiving quality instruction regardless of where they are. We know each of you have heard the numerous challenges and concerns we faced in returning to school in a COVID environment. And while we all support and serve various levels of students, we have some of the same challenges in common. Though many days, these challenges have proven to be overwhelming, we continue to utilize research-based strategies to approach the school year. Let's look at the next slide. It is safe to say that from K to twelfth grade, we are filling in foundational skills gaps, supporting unfinished learning, building teacher and leader capacity in a digital world, increasing student engagement, while all trying to support struggling learners in remote learning environments. And so to do this, we know that it is a monumental task, but we are reimagining the possibilities. We're not making excuses, but being solution-oriented and using the PLC or the Professional Learning Communities model that Mrs. Okonski just shared with you. Next slide. So just to give you just a brief overview of what the Professional Learning Community model includes, it answers and addresses three major questions. What do we want our students to learn? How will we know they are learning? And how will we respond when they don't learn or if they already know it? At each one of the grade levels, K to twelve, we have done a number of things to answer each of these questions, starting with what we want them to learn. We knew that they had many gaps and missing parts from our interruption due to COVID. And so as a team, we reviewed Tier One curriculum resources and looked at the guidance that was provided by the LBOE, along with all of our curriculum partners, to support teachers in their use in the remote, hybrid, and face-to-face environments. We also provided our leaders, our teachers, our students, and even our parents with recommendations and training and support to ensure that they were ready for high-quality instruction. At the beginning, as practitioners, we are always diagnosing and prescribing. And so to answer question number two, how will we know they know it? We begin by administering our LEAP three sixty diagnostics, grade-level-specific screeners, and even social-emotional learner screeners. Once these data sources were received, we ensured that data teams of various groups have met, and they continue to meet to review and analyze data for the purpose of forming intervention groups, individual student and school support plans, as well as instructional plans designed to fill gaps. Once we put our students in groups and we begin to work our plans, our instructional plans, of course, students must continue to be assessed using the formative assessment cycle to measure progress towards mastery. We continue to have our data team meetings where we are creating instructional plans to address those gaps that we continue to see by utilizing different resources in small group instruction, as well as various intervention groups. We are currently in the middle of site visits and data reviews. And if any of you would like to see some of those, we can share samples so that you can see the types of things that are reviewed, the discussions that are shared with school leadership teams, and just how much we are digging deep, diagnosing, and prescribing to make sure learning continues. This evening, you have for your information data representative of all grade levels. Mr. Perry will now share with you a snapshot of our diagnostic data.
Thank you, Ms. Brister. Good afternoon, interim superintendent Mr. Smith, president Mr. Goday, vice president Mr. Howard, and distinguished members of the board. Using diagnostic data in our PLCs, we're able to leverage three buckets. The first bucket is establish a tiered approach to collecting data. It enables schools to live out their commitments to equity by providing an efficient and effective process for identifying students' needs early, and it presents opportunities to dedicate the most resources to students at greater risk, an approach with universal benefits. Number two, prioritizing data close to instruction, ensuring that we build our teachers' muscles around unpacking the standard to teach rigor of the standards. And three, take action. We provide support to bridge the gaps. We tap into our most precious commodities, our stakeholders. Next slide. The next slide is a data slide using our most current data from LEAP three sixty. We've grouped the elementary, middle, and high school in order to find systemic patterns that exist in our district. The math data is reported using major content and mathematical practices. An average for the major content areas and mathematical practices was conducted for each grade-level band. After careful analysis of the district's summative data, we are able to surmise a gap when it relates to mathematical practices. So you may ask, what is mathematical practices? Mathematical practices test major content using three problem sets called Type One, Type Two, and Type Three problems. Type One problems assess the rigor in the major content through conceptual application and/or fluency-based problems. Type Two problems require students to reason and explain their answers, hence connecting this to our ELA weakness. I'll get to that in a second. Type Three problems require students to demonstrate their understanding using a model and/or a drawing. So if you look at where our kids struggle the most, I think, yeah, go back one slide. Oh, I'm sorry, go forward. I did math first, I'm sorry. Can you go forward again? Thank you, I'm sorry. So in the math data, we see that our students struggle with Type One, Two, and Three problems, which require students to first assess the rigor, also to explain their rationale, and thirdly, to present a model of their understanding. Now, can you go back to the previous slide? Thank you. Like LEAP twenty twenty-five summative data, student performance is reported by categories and subcategories. The data lets us, lets us know students are able to read, understand, and communicate their understanding of literary and informational texts. The writing component consists of the overall writing content, presentation of ideas, and control of conventions. The data reflects that reading is an area of concern, however, we should place emphasis on students' abilities to communicate their understanding in written form. I heard a quote that said once, I mean, I read a quote that said, unless we want an education system just focused on making people consumers and not focused on helping them be producers, then emphasize reading only. For this reason, we selected writing content. Writing is a form of literacy that is often overlooked. Writing content is not only observed as an area of support in ELA, but also demonstrated in mathematical practices as well. Implementing strategies to focus on writing will support our students with demonstrating various aspects of language usage, development of ideas, and sharing their understanding from reading, reading complex texts, complex texts, and writing across our curriculum. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Semino. Thank you.
And when you look at the ELA slide, I just wanted to note that the board last month, you approved some contracts, the Writing Revolution contracts. And as you, and when you look at the diagnostic data, we knew that there was a gap, and one of the things that we need to really beef up our teachers with professional development around writing. So that's why we're partnering with the Writing Revolution.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Smith, president Goday, vice president Howard, and members of the board. I want to extend from my colleagues just to talk specifically about some of our focus in high school programs. If you go to the next slide, just showing specifically some of the unique things that come across high school that have already come up this evening that we want to focus on. Mr. Smith has challenged us to show what our next steps are in this COVID environment to address students' instructional needs. So at the high school level, what do we want students to know? First and foremost, we want our high school students to know the clear path toward a high school diploma with the academic skills, knowledge, and skills to move directly into college programs and into the workforce, because our students do exit our district at our level. So it is extremely crucial that we begin to prepare them, which you see with some of the things that have come up with the college AP test and the dual enrollment, that it's automatically transitioning them into that college format. And not mentioned yet are also very robust coursework in workforce development, because we also have those courses as well. So all of that is supported through, of course, as my colleagues have said, continued rigorous classroom instruction, because at the high school level, we're covering multiple assessment types, not only the state assessments, but of course, the advanced placement assessments as previously mentioned, dual enrollment assessments with actual college professors, and following those college curriculums. The LEAP three sixty, of course, the PSAT many of our students are taking, the ACT ACT, Work Keys, and workforce certifications are IBCs. So the assessment picture does get more complex at the high school level. The College and Career Readiness Curriculum, we want to be aligned. Alignment has been mentioned with grade, the literacy, and the numeracy piece, which is very important that Mr. Perry already covered several of those categories. We want to be aligned in this rigorous curriculum as we prepare our high school students. And then one that hasn't been mentioned are the soft skills that are extremely important that the business community has challenged us for many years to make sure our students are exiting with the soft skills they need and the college community with the soft skills they need to take to college as well. So those involve what we need our students to know. How do we know if they know it? Of course, graduation is our ultimate assessment in our students walking across the stage, which makes grad rate always our focus. Even though we do not get a school performance score this year, grad rate at the high school is going to continue to be our ultimate focus. So the grading practices at the high school level is extremely important and monitored by our school-level teams because earning Carnegie units is that pathway to graduation. So the grading practices, we spend a lot of time on grading practices and monitoring those at the high school level because they ultimately end in those Carnegie units earned. And of course, again, not to be repetitive, but those performances on those multiple assessments that I mentioned, such as AP, I did not mention CLEP in the last time, which is another college preparation test that they can get college credit for. So just the multiple assessments that we look at when we go in and measure the progress in our high schools. How will we respond and support our students? As already mentioned, in K-8, the Tier One Curriculum, if we use that at the level, and that is one of the indicators of our rigorous instruction going on, our high school teams monitor that in walkthroughs, as mentioned earlier, just like my K-8 colleagues. The grading practices, as I mentioned. One thing not mentioned, and I know we are doing K-12 right now, it may not be tangible to us, but in this time it's important to mention is the social emotional learning curriculum that has been presented K-12 for our teams to use. During this time, especially with our older students, it is extremely important that we lean on that social emotional learning curriculum as well. So I have to mention that. And then last but not least, in that support is the virtual learning and face-to-face accommodations that both teachers and students. It's when we go into the schools and meet with the teams and meet with the staff, and I know you hear the same thing, is just all of the accommodations. We're doing both face-to-face. And at the high school level, we are, our students, our teachers are doing both face-to-face and virtual simultaneously. So I'll add that.
Ms. Semino, if I can stop you for two seconds. This might be a question more for Mr. Smith, but I'm just going to ask it. So we see these goals and we see these measures of improvement. They seem extremely universal. So we have some persistently struggling schools and some persistently struggling groups of students. What are we as a district? I think this is great. But I think that in order to like move those students who have been historically underperforming year after year after year, it has to be something in addition to. So how do we get to a point to developing a specific strategy for those schools and those students? Or are we even on the path to getting there?
Yeah, let me address the ACT on the next slide, and then I will talk about the ACT-specific things and some of the graduation rate-specific things. So with the learning gaps, when we look in, yeah, those are, like I say, our main goals and for us increasing ACT performance is some of the strategies. If you go to the next slide with the ACT, the one before that, I'm sorry, again. The next one, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. With the ACT, the three goals that we've identified, specifically with the curriculum team, we've set up a specific plan to go in and provide professional development for our high school teams that center around aligning the standards that the students need to talk, and it's simple. What's being tested on the ACT to be taught, that's specific. And that professional development to be more intentional toward that. Ms. Okansky mentioned earlier, one of the things accountability is providing, and that's Horizon, which is an actual ACT tutoring platform that we will be able to use. And Mr. Howard, that especially for those specifically struggling schools that have the highest need, Horizon will help us. And that'll come with what we purchased additional to illuminate that's already with our assessment platform. Horizon will be available to all of those schools. But more specifically, we can intentionally identify the students in the most support. So I'll go more immediate. The seniors this year who would have gotten to take it, but were canceled, they took it October 6th, that data's starting to come in. They can immediately begin to do some of that work with that plan before they retake in March. So that's one of the platforms. And the principals have also used a lot of autonomy through Gear Up funding to purchase and use. And I'll give an example, the more high-need schools for ACT improvement have been able to have the funds for Gear Up to purchase any of the additional resources. And we have our ACT prep partners that we've also had. We will continue that. And some of those are, well, those have not changed. So in asking, answering your question specifically, some of that will be additional resources for those in I need, but continually across the board. So even if that school have had higher than the other schools, they still have access to it. But the schools that have the highest need to make, when those stores start to come in for seniors, but now with the professional development provided by curriculum, we can start at the ninth grade. So our partners with some of our DNF schools will now start to restructure our freshman academies to start aligning their curriculum from the freshman academy level. So I hope that addresses that.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Semino. That gets to the point of my question. I just think that what, if you look at the data that the state released related to the school-wide data of like how students are performing on the ACT, when you leave Baton Rouge High Selective Admission School, Liberty High Selective Admission School, there is a drastic decrease. So like, I understand like these universal practices, and I think that they are like going to help. But I think that we have to dig even deeper to like really create a sustainable model that addresses like these underperforming students and underperforming schools as it relates to ACT data. Because I mean, the numbers that were released by the state were really disturbing, like extremely disturbing for anybody who works in education. However you feel politically, anybody who works in education, if you look at those numbers and know that ACT is a key to opportunity for students, it's disturbing for the community, it's disturbing for the state, it's disturbing for this district, it's disturbing for the city. So like, I think this is great, but we have to do a lot more action to dig deeper to see where we're dropping the ball. And next year, like, because I don't want to come back next year and we're talking about a universal plan and we're still looking at 10 ACT averages at some of our schools. So that's just, that's just my push and concern from all of us, not just for you, not just for Mr. Smith, for the collective community.
And I do think some of our intentional work in those content areas to address are going to help some of that, especially the alignment piece that you mentioned. So, and one other piece I did not mention is one of the things we're doing, the pre-ACT now giving it to the entire 10th grade. Student population, Gear Up will now cover that. So we will also have students to begin doing that, which exposes them to it earlier. So that was one thing that I meant. So the main thing is with the ACT focus is to sync what is being tested to what is being taught in alignment. So I agree with that. So the, you know, and just to close finally for, in Mr. Neke's case, we'll go into what we're measuring to make sure some of these things happen. Our main goal, going next steps for high school, especially our older students, is just to reconnect, reengage, and regain pacing with our students in this virtual environment. So that is kind of our next step. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Neke to just show how we're going to be measuring some of that in our data business.
Thank you.
And to add, Mr.?
Ms. Collins.
And I think probably what would help is give, in future presentations of this nature, give the overall picture and then just go ahead and break it down. I mean, we can't have a presentation be too entirely long, but maybe just upfront, these are our most troubled schools. And then as you explain, because you're saying what you're doing in those troubled schools, but conceptually, it'll probably be easier for folks to process that, okay, you are saying you're deliberately doing it at so-and-so schools if they see it broken out away from the whole. Because you did explain what you're doing at those troubled schools, but it makes it hard for people to understand it in a transparent way. Not, and I'm not saying you wouldn't try to be transparent, but it helps people see the transparency, see that you deliberately being focused on those particular schools.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Smith?
No, I would just like to add, you made a very valid point about the alignment. And in my conversation, Ben and I, we had with State Superintendent Bromley, one of the things he mentioned, he noticed that there was an alignment gap with the curriculum. And so we don't necessarily have to rely on the state to align curriculum. We have curriculum content leaders in the district where we're going to start that process with aligning the curriculum. And really, I just have to, being a middle school person, principal, we really have to start preparing students for ACT in a middle school. Every middle school should have an opportunity to provide kids the option to take ACT if they can do it. And so that's where it really starts. And if you look at the research, and you want to know how kids will perform on ACT, you really go back to the eighth grade math scores. And so we need to make certain that we fill in those gaps in the eighth grade very early, preparing kids, and monitoring courses that kids are taking. Not allowing kids, because of Jump Start, to opt out of certain courses, but making sure that they're taking the rigorous courses that will prepare them for their junior year to take ACT. And so those are one of the things that we're looking at, especially in our low-performing high schools. We want to know who is actually taking certain courses like English 1, Algebra 1, and those type courses to make certain that those kids are not being marginalized and not having the opportunity to be prepared when they're junior year to take, be prepared for ACT.
All right. So to kind of put some of this and kind of wrap it up so that you kind of see the full focus for high schools, really it focuses around graduation and more importantly, all the pieces that lead to that. And one thing kind of as we go through tonight, I know this is a lot of information, but I know Mr. Smith is committed to this. And our goal is to do this regularly at board meetings so that we can start chunking this and we can go more in depth. Because again, there's so many pieces of this that we can dig in deeper, just like to your point, Ms. Collins. And we'd like to be able to do that. But if you could put up the next slide with the graduate piece, I'll kind of talk through that. And Mr. Howard really kind of hit on a couple of big points. One focused on graduation, the other one on ACT. One thing that kind of that Ms. Semino covered were all the internal things that we can do with our staff and our CNI team to actually support ACT. We also have SCA funding. Half of our SCA funding goes to vendors who come in and do ACT review and support on our campuses. So all of our high schools have that as well. Now that's where you get more targeted. So the principals start picking who can be supported, who can get to a next level. They use those resources for that. But in addition, it's our goal is to try to push this more to the everyday classroom. Now, one difference or one change was with Jump Start. So students who opt into Jump Start, just so you're aware, they don't have to take geometry. They don't have to take English 2 or 3. They don't have to take chemistry or physics or some of those courses that prepare you for ACT. Instead, they're taking pathway courses for a career. So some of that is they're not taking some of those prerequisite courses that really kind of help out with an ACT test. So some of that is going back to Mr. Smith's point and trying to front-load as much information for students who are going to be opting into those programs to give them a better foot or grasp into ACT. The other thing is most of those students will only take ACT one time. They'll take it their junior year. And then after that, they focus on the Work Keys assessments, which are more career-oriented. So again, it's kind of a one-shot for some of those students. So again, it's offering additional options for them to do it, but also giving them ACT prep courses and encouraging them that they can still go Jump Start pathways, but they can continue through college as well. They can do both options. So again, we're looking at that. The way we do this is using our graduate pillars of success.
Before you continue, Ms. Neke, we have two questions from the board. And I think that, and you just mentioned a point that I want to just bring out briefly, we do need to do a better job of making sure that we are giving kids this both and option and not an either-or option. Because for a 10th grade student to have to decide his life, his or her life at 10th grade, I think that's problematic. I think that's a problem with the state. But if we as a district can do something to alleviate that and give kids the both and options, I think that that's the right thing to think about. Ms. Dyson?
Yep. Or quickly to answer that, I know going to an eighth period day helped that. We gave four more extra courses. But we're also seeing the opposite. We see kids who are planning to go to four-year university and by their senior year decide, oh, I'd really rather C-Tech or Courier. And now they don't have enough time to do it. Yeah, it's really tough. I mean, who in 10th grade, how many of us in 10th grade knew exactly what we were going to do?
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am?
That's so true. So a few years ago, we worked real hard to get ACT being paid and the retake being paid for all of our students. And included that the retake would be at the school site so that transportation wasn't an issue and all of those things. And so are we, are we still doing that?
Yes, we still offer a senior year retest. However, some students will take Work Keys if they're more career pathway oriented. Others will take ACT. But they're given the option. So even if I'm a career pathway student, but I want to take my ACT to get another shot at making a higher score, they have the option to do that with us paying for it.
And then the other thing that we worked hard to do is to offer ACT prep as an elective at every high school.
Yes, that's.
And is that, the four schedule, I think, is not probably going to get that as many students because there's just not enough time to have as many classes.
Right. Well, they can flip the semesters, but to your point, yes. That's where some of the ACT vendors come in. And our schools have done a good job of.
And are they doing that after school?
Mostly during the school day, embedded.
So in a four-block, what are they pulling them out of?
It can be an elective, or it can be built-in career readiness or advanced career readiness courses. So there's some universal courses that kids can take where they get it supplemented. Now, some of our schools have gotten pretty unique where they'll work it into English classes and other things as well. So they've taken what the vendors have done and then built on top of it. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just bring out the point, I think that as a state, as a district, I think that was great to provide access to ACT prep and provide actual payment for testing, retesting. But I think the problem and the gap and why we see the numbers that we see is the level of quality of instruction within prep classes. Because typically what happens at schools is that when you are offering ACT as a prep, like principals are so like tired and, they're just trying to find someone to teach the course. And research says that it matters the quality of delivery for ACT instruction. Because if we had quality like ACT prep in every single school, the numbers wouldn't look like they look. So I think that we provide the access. It's just the level of quality that's provided within that access as we think about it. But Ms. Collins?
So really, I just want to lift up a concern. I can't even pretend to say I know an answer for it, but I... So I have an issue, and let me just first say, I agree we should not do what has been traditionally called tracker student. I agree that shouldn't happen. But I also had, I never agreed with ACT being tied to school or child performance across the state. It was part of the race to the top, you know, the way we chose to do race to the top under Obama's education initiative. And that was one thing that I strongly disagree with because, because you tying something that, how long ago was that, that we started doing this? And the curriculum still is not relevant to help a child? We still, you know, as a whole education community, not just EBR School District, not just the state, as a whole entire education community, we've tied ACT to school performance scores and every child must take it, whether they give a crap about getting an astrology degree or whatever degree, you know. But we've not even, as an education community, aligned those things up. Why? Because we got to set a whole nother accountability standards going on with this test and that test. And so how can you possibly come up with a curriculum, And so, how can you possibly come up with a curriculum, a comprehensive curriculum, that's not going to drive any educator crazy from trying to get all these children on track? The Jump Start, the fact that, and I'm not saying this has a fault to this district, but the fact that if a child chooses the Jump Start pathway, that means they focus more on what makes sense vocationally, which, you know, in a common sense world, I think that makes sense. The problem though is that it goes back to impacting the ACT score. So, I just want to lift up that I think is important for us as an education community to start not just dealing with the numbers as they are, but sometimes we need to ask, why in the heck are we even using these numbers as an indicator of success or failure in the first place? And if it's not a true indicator of success or failure in the first place, can we spend our resources better in other ways? And if that means we need to advocate for our children at the state cabinet or BESI board meetings or within our group, those, you know, within our district, those things, we have the power to control that's beyond what, you know, BESI or whomever can do. I think, I just get frustrated, and this comment, again, is not pushed back to any particular comment anyone has made. It's just, I'm sitting here irritated because we trying to climb a ladder that might not even be perched up on the right thing to climb up on in the first place. And I just wanted to lift that up. And if there is something that I'm misunderstanding in terms of how curriculum alignment and yada, yada, yada is working, then help me, but I just disagree period in the first place that every child must take the ACT and we're using it. And should we make it an option? Yes. Should we prepare every child to be able to? If that's what they choose, yes, we should do the absolute best at preparing any child that wants to try to go that route or what have you. But it has been statistically more detrimental to these children than it has been beneficial. And I just wanted to lift that point up.
No, and if I could just respond briefly, Ms. Collins, I agree. Because we do a lot of time, we spend a lot of time at the state advocating against ACT being used as an access to entry of anything because we know historically how the test was written, who was willing to serve and all of those things. So, there's a lot of ongoing action to just eliminate it period. But I do believe that while it's here, we have to figure out how to help the kids, so.
Yeah, and your four-year universities like LSU and Southern have definitely started to look past that and see other options. BRCC doesn't require it. But, you know, just to Mr. Howard's point, while it's there, it is an access point and we have to be able to maximize it. And it is ironic that our ACT index is going up because it factors in work keys, but our ACT scores go down. So, it's a, yeah, you're fighting different ends. Okay. So, the last piece I did want to bring up is the graduate piece. And we'll provide this in a backup for you. You can go dig into a link that'll give you a lot of other things that we discussed tonight. But what we do with our high schools is we have about a 50-slide template that we use, and we've been using for the last two to three years to really dig into what supports graduation. We worked with our high school teams and just looking at best practices and decided and looked at what eight things really support graduation. And that ranges from course options or opportunities to attendance, to universal health and wellness, to extracurricular access. So, really digging in deep on what supports a student to get to that finish line. And so, our high schools are in the process. We normally do this in early September, but because of COVID, we focus on really taking care of people and getting them back in school safely. But they're working on this now in November to show what they're doing to pick back up and continue that progress towards graduation. And what they build out are eight SMART goals related to each of those buckets that are actionable, that are completed by the end of the year. And they really get their teacher teams, the county rally behind this, and their administrative teams to work on those areas. And we've seen some amazing work trying to focus on all those things that factor into, you know, getting a student to walk across the stage. There's so much there. Again, attendance, course opportunities, EOC prep, all of it. So, you have to look at it holistically. And I'll be happy to show that to you, and you can dig into it and see it. We'll provide examples after they set their SMART goals this month. And really, to see with those schools, when we talk about focusing on individual things, this is where it happens. And that's where we really get to name tag accountability, looking at individual students and what we can do to support them. The middle school does something in comparison to this called Reach. So, again, their goals are pushing forward to make sure kids are prepared for high school in the same fashion. All right. And then our last slide. Everything we talked about tonight really focuses back on the feedback loop, really for not only support, assessment, and our PLC models. So, again, at the elementary level, you saw a lot of things PLC is focused on. What's happening in the classroom, student work samples, you know, talking about the data that's happening with students individually. At the high school level, middle school level is the same. At the high school level, you see some of the same work, but then you start seeing extended things like truancy, attendance. You start looking at individual data also related to CTE courses and our students progressing in their pathways. So, again, if you, you know, look back at that, it's all about that cycle of continuous improvement from planning, moving forward into, you know, making adjustments, and then coming back to doing diagnostics or review of the data, starting the cycle all over again. So, with that, we'll go ahead and close out and answer any other follow-up questions.
Mr. Goday?
First of all, thank you for all of the staff that put this together. It's very refreshing to spend a good part of a school board meeting talking about education.
Absolutely.
That's a wonderful thing, and I hope we can do much more of that and working through that. And I also want to commend the people who put together this presentation. I'm a very visual person, and making some of this visual makes it a lot easier for me to comprehend and understand. So, I appreciate all of that very much. On the no good deed goes unpunished side, I really would like to have this earlier so we could look at it and digest it before we get into the meeting. So, I applaud the effort and everything, and I want to keep this up and just give us a chance to get it a little bit sooner. Excuse me. And the other thing I really liked was tying, you know, we get into all these contracts and things that we approve. And basically, for most of it, I'm going on my trust in you guys to say we really need these things. But I really appreciate the ability to tie some of these goals to this is why we have this particular contract and that sort of thing. Not that I'm going to get into the details of every contract, I'm not. But it really helps us out, both the funding source and what is the target associated with these goals and problems and issues that these contracts address. So, I really appreciate that information, and I look forward to many more of these types of presentations. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, as do we.
Thank you, Ms. Nikes. Mr. Smith, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. We will now move to our items for consideration. There's been a request made to remove item D nine to D one. Are there any objections to that? Seeing, we will take our first item for consideration being item D nine. It is the Crestwood Middle School Facility Renovation. It is a consideration of a request for the authorization for staff to advertise, accept low bids, meeting specifications that make the order of a contract and construction of the Crestwood Middle School Facility Renovation Project, the Scottlinville Area Middle School Component, as specified in the A Plan to Improve Facilities Technology, Discipline, and Conversation to the East Spanish Parish School Board, whose school system, as revised through the February 27, 22nd, excuse me, 2018, or reject any and all low bids just caused in accordance with the Louisiana Public Bid, Louisiana Revised Statute, Title 38, Chapter 10. The funding source is Phase Three of the Tax Plan, Proposition One. Mr. Williams, do you have? Sorry, moved by Mr. Tadman, seconded by Mr. Goday. Mr. Williams, do you have anything that you would like to present to the board?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe there's a presentation. It's not my presentation, but I can give a.
I don't, if any, I don't need the presentation. If anybody from the board needs a presentation, we're good. I just want to know if you had anything you wanted to add, just surface level?
No, I can give an overview of the project if that's a privilege of the board. I can just kind of give you the specifics. As we know, it's a year-two project. It's the middle school component in the Scottlinville area. Our team has conducted evaluation of kind of the opportunities and the options for this program. We've reached out to the community, as you know, got some feedback. We've had our team of architects and engineers go out to the Crestwood Middle Site, take a look at it, and have received some professional estimates on the renovation of that site in order to facilitate the program that the school desires. Something important, Mr. Smith, to make you aware of. I did go back and look at the assessment that we had done five years ago, and it's pretty much in align with where we are, including the estimate for construction. So, as it stands right now, it's a $4 million project. That's about $3 million in construction costs. That includes interior renovations, so if there's carpet, we'll replace the carpet ceiling if it needs to be replaced. That's LED lighting, that's some furniture. There's some HVAC equipment that's being replaced as we speak by the service provider. There's some HVAC equipment that's not in their scope that will be a part of the construction scope to, that's a boiler. So, that's the one big item there and some HVAC controls. There's some student desks that we're going to look at getting replaced. We're going to put in a new secured vestibule. When you get to the school, it's kind of, you know, you got that one little area. We're going to open that up and make it a little more inviting and liven that area up because we see that as an opportunity for the community and the school when you're walking in instead of walking in kind of directly into the corridors. The gymnasium is going to get some pretty significant things. They have the old grand wood floor like at Tara, so that's going to get refinished and get new striping. There's that old insulation that's in there that's sprayed on, that's turned brown now. Excuse me, we'll scrape that off, spray some new insulation on, some new lighting, and that should give that a whole new look. There is a quick breakdown of the site. There's 33 classrooms there, so there's three main hallways. There's a gym, choir band, food lab, clothing lab, art room, industrial arts, and a media center. So, we'll go through and give that, you know, a very good renovation. It'd be the equivalent to what has happened at North Banks over the past few years and Park Forest Middle a few years back. So, if there's any other questions, I can answer those.
Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Mr. Goday?
I just have a quick question, I guess, as for Mr. Nikes. Would you put the map up there, please, sir? These are the current attendance zones for Park Forest Middle. Where exactly on this map is Crestwood?
Yes, sir. I'll kind of walk over and show you.
Right there, okay. And so, as we do this, what changes will be made to the Park Forest Middle School Attendance Zone?
Correct. If you look kind of back on the map, you'll see that basically what you have is the top-left side of it is a Scottlinville Attendance Zone. So, the students who would be in that attendance zone would continue to go back to their school. This is not the Park Forest Attendance Zone. This is actually the Scottlinville Attendance Zone. It's non-contiguous. So, that Park Forest Attendance Zone will stay the same for its students. But what will now not happen is all those Scottlinville students will not go all the way down to Park Forest. As of end of last week, we had 191 students, traditional students, who were going to Park Forest from the Scottlinville Zone. And a couple of interesting things about Scottlinville, of all of our families of schools, the least amount of students leave Scottlinville to go to any other programming. For example, at the high school level, only 5% of students leave the school. So, you have families that definitely want traditional schools in their area. And this was something that was identified in the tax plan. It was the only non-contiguous zone and really to try to get students back home so that they could stay there.
I applaud that very much, and I think it's an excellent plan. My other question is, what happens to Park Forest Middle? Will it be vastly underutilized once these students are at Crestwood?
Not necessarily vastly underutilized. You'd still have probably somewhere around 500 or more students there. The other thing is Park Forest does have the MSAP Grant Program. So, they have done a job of recruiting some students into that school and would give them capacity.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. Mr. Tadman?
Thank you, Vice President Howard. Guess I have a question for each of you. When will the work be done? When will it be completed?
We'll be done by August, so by the start of school.
Okay.
We're going to be kicked off in March.
Okay, don't go anywhere. Mr. Nikes, how many kids do we expect to be enrolled in our new reconstituted school? What's your projections?
It would really depend on how we roll it out. So, if you moved all those students at once, it would be 191-plus. We may even move parts of that elementary school over because they're basically on the same campus. And the idea was eventually we could explore pre-K options and other things at the elementary site. The other option is to roll it up one grade level at a time. So, it would be maybe the elementary school plus those grade levels. But all that can be determined. We have seen some interest with parents because they didn't have a traditional middle school. We had them go into charter schools. So, you may recover some students that way as well.
Okay. Mr. Marcus? I just wanted to congratulate you on being named in the top 40, under 40. I can't imagine you're under 40, but congratulations to you.
Thank you.
That's all my questions, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Tadman. And just for some context for the board, there is a desire for a traditional middle school within that community. When I was in elementary, I went to Crestwood Elementary, and every single student, everybody in the neighborhood went to Crestwood Middle. So, I think that you will see a buzz and interest once the school is rolled out from the people in the community. So, just to provide context for the board. The board is now clear. Are there any additional comments or questions from the board? Ms. Jackson?
Yeah, I just wanted to ditto the sentiment about the desire for that school, for that area. Since I've been on the board, I've gotten constant requests from people, especially those in the avenues, that really missed being in their neighborhood, you know, for school and resented being moved all the way across town to, although it's a great school, but, you know, they just wanted to be there. And I'm glad that I will not be hounded anymore about that. So, you know, all you guys out there in avenues in Scottlinville, it's coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Seeing any more comments from the board? Are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none from the audience, we'll go back to the board. Madam Secretary?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Motion carries. The next item for consideration, we'll go back to D one, is a professional service contract.
Point of order, real quick. Ms., on board docs on your thing, we skipped to item D nine, and you had it under item D one as the, making the motion in the second. At least this was showing up on the screen. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you're fine.
I want to make sure it's recorded properly in the right place to vote.
Absolutely.
When it flashed up on the screen, it did not look correct. When it flashed up on the screen, it did not look correct. Now it's, now that's the correct one. Do we need to vote on this one?
No.
Okay. Excuse me for that.
No, thank you, Mr. Godey. Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Thank you, Mr. Godey. Our next item for consideration is item D1, it's professional service contracts. It is a consideration of requests for the following professional service contract between East Spanish Parish School Board and the following. Savas Learning Academy Company, LLC, in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to provide professional development and support Tier One curriculum. The funding source is Title II. Resilient Leadership LLC, in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred dollars to provide coaching techniques to school leaders. The funding source is Title II, non-public. A New Beginnings Personal Care LLC, not to exceed ninety thousand dollars to provide LPN nursing services. Funding source IDA. Manners of the Heart, in the amount of seventy-three thousand seven hundred and nine dollars for one year. Funding source CARES Act Strong Start. Teach Stone Incorporated, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand three hundred to provide professional development and support. Funding source Striving to Read this Comprehensive Literacy, Dr. Bentley. Is there a motion? So moved by Mr. Tapman, seconded by Ms. Ware Jackson. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Is that old, Mr. Tapman? Is your request to speak old? Oh, yeah, we have, gotcha. Seeing none, any comments from the audience? Back to the board, we'll wait for Mr. Godey.
Yes. And just a note to the board, there are only five people in attendance, so we're at a quorum, so if someone leaves, we would have to suspend the meeting or shut down, and I would leave it to my expert on Robert's rules, how to proceed, but we just need to be cautious, and I want to bring that to everybody's attention.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item for consideration is item D2. It's a revenue anticipation notes. It is a consideration of a request for the approval of the attached resolution giving preliminary approval to the issuance of not exceeding thirty-five million dollars of revenue anticipation notes of the East Spanish Parish School Board, State of Louisiana, providing certain terms of said notes, making the application to the state bond commission for approval of said notes, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Ms. Lopez? So, so, yep, make, so moved by Mr. Godey, seconded by Mr. Tapman. Thank y'all for keeping me in line. Ms. Lopez.
Good evening. These are the same bonds we requested in November of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. I do not anticipate needing the drawdown to thirty-five million requested, however, we're requesting them again out of an abundance of caution. The funds, if needed, the funds would be drawn down in December, and they would be repaid immediately in January when we receive our property taxes.
Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Seeing none, we will go to the audience, questions or concerns from the audience? Seeing none, back to the board. Madam Secretary.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item for consideration is item D3. It is a request for proposal of the benefits consultant. It is a consideration of a request for the authorization for the state to issue a request for proposal, RFP, to seek proposals to provide benefit consulting services for the district. At this time, I entertain a motion. So moved by Mr. Godey, seconded by Ms. Ware Jackson. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Mr. Tapman.
Thank you, Vice President Howard. Is this the Mercer contract?
Yes, sir.
So it's just to issue the RFP, and they may bid on it or may not bid on it?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
But it would open it up so that others would?
Yep.
Yes, so it'll be advertised in the paper, and my goal is to, as soon as the board approves it in the November meeting, we're gonna start the, at the bid process, so we can start taking in the receipts from the people wanting to bid when we come back from the holiday break. So we should have a decision by March or April if we ought to vote on.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, thank you, Vice President Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Tapman. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Mr. Godey.
I just wanted to make a quick comment on the timing of this, because the Mercer contract actually goes through the end of 2021, but we need the results of, for twenty, for the 2021, 2022 budget, we're gonna need the numbers in May. And so if we change consultant, we're gonna need that consultant to be on board. So that's why it's coming up now, even though it's over a year before the contract expires.
Thank you, Mr. Godey. Are there any questions, additional questions or concerns from the board?
Ms. Dyson.
Ms. Dyson. It's not showing up on the screen.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, and I agree that this is good timing. One thing, and it's really not Mercer that, or whoever, that this would, that the contract probably wouldn't include this, but one thing that I'm hearing a lot about our plans, just to let you know in general, is that we really don't have a plan that pays in-network for anything out of the State of Louisiana. And so I'm hearing, you know, when, when people who are already stressed financially with cancer and want to go to MDA or other specialty situations that, or if they're traveling out of town, or if they moved out of town. And so just in the future, I'd like to see something, someone that can offer us like, you know, that as an option.
I can absolutely reach out to our Blue Cross Blue Shield consultants. Because we are with Blue Cross Blue Shield, because they can offer us such wonderful discounts because they are local, it is local that you receive the discounts. If you had a, an illness, a disease, a surgery that someone at Mary Bird Perkins could not assist you with, then MD Anderson, if that is where you need it to be, we would be charged only the in, the in pair, or in-state cost, but you're right, as long as there is another provider that can provide the service, Blue Cross won't do it, but we can absolutely bring it up to them.
And that's not necessarily the provider of choice.
Sure, sure, no, I understand.
Just because somebody says they can do something doesn't necessarily satisfy that person who may be, you know, at life or death situation.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I'll reach out to Blue Cross and see what I can get for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson, thank you, Ms. Lopez. Are there any additional questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Questions or comments, or comments from the audience? Seeing none, back to the board. Madam Secretary.
Motion carries.
The motion carries. We will now move to item R, I mean, D3, excuse me. It is a request for proposal for internet services. It is a consideration of a request for the authorization for staff to issue a RFP to seek proposals to provide internet services for the district. I'll entertain a motion at this time. So moved by Mr. Tapman, seconded by Ms. Ware Jackson. Are there any questions or concerns from the audience? I mean, from the board, excuse me. Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the audience. Seeing none, back to the board. Madam Secretary.
Motion carries.
The motion carries. We'll now move to item D5. It is a request for quotes and qualifications for our RFQ, RFQQ, excuse me, strategic plan. Consideration of request for the authorization for staff to issue a request for quotes and qualifications, RFQ, to seek proposals for the strategic plan. I'll take a motion at this time. So moved by Mr. Tapman, seconded by Ms. Dyson. Mr. Smith, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
No, if this item is approved at the November 4th board meeting, we would like to work in collaboration with the board with putting that RFQQ out.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Mr. Godey.
Yes, I am fully in favor of this, and I guess the only thing that we need to have a plan coming from you, Mr. Smith, as the interim superintendent, as to, as, after that RFQ is prepared, I think it needs to come to the board to look at before it actually goes out, because that's gonna detail process and things like that about what kind of process we want to accomplish on that. So fully in favor of this, and fully in favor of guys working on it, and I'm glad to see it's starting to get some, some motion behind it, but we do need a little more input after the fact of the thing being put together, to make sure it's requesting something that we as a board really want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Godey. Mr. Tapman.
Thank you, Vice President Howard. I was, I echo exactly what you said, so I won't take up time, but I agree, we, we need to, you know, we need to have, we need to watch this closely and make sure it aligns with what we're trying to do, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tapman. Any additional questions or concerns from the board? Seeing none, comments from the audience? Seeing none, back to the board. Madam Secretary.
The motion carries.
All right, the next item for consideration is item D6. It is an Oversight Committee financial update. It is a consideration of a request for the preliminary actual semi-annual financial 2019, 2020 tax plan, plan update, and proposed 2020, 2021 tax plan budget for Proposition 1. I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Mr. Godey, seconded by Mr. Tapman. Ms. Lopez, is there anything that you'd like to add to this item?
No, sir, if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. We did have the Oversight Committee meeting on October nineteenth, 2020.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the audience. Seeing none, back to the board. No additional questions or comments? Madam Secretary.
So it's my understanding that we have the intent to move this along, that we're already past the date, and that this was, this went to the oversight because we were already past the date, and...
Well, actually, I believe this is the financial update, yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I jumped the gun. Sorry.
All right, no additional questions or comments from the board. Madam Secretary.
The motion carries.
The motion carries. Our next item for consideration is the Oversight Committee land purchase approval. It is a consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from staff and the approval from the Oversight Committee to modify a plan to improve facilities, technology, discipline, compensation, and the East Spanish Parish School System tax plan to delay the one-year land purchase to year two. At this time, I entertain a motion. So moved by Mr. Godey, seconded by Mr. Tapman. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Godey.
For everyone listening, this is a technical item, because the land purchase was listed in year one, and we're moving it to year two simply because we haven't gotten it done yet. I do want everyone to understand that the current plan that we have for addressing this issue is, we will be presenting at the December COW a presentation about the different possible sites at the December COW, and that would be an information-only type presentation where we can put all the information, the board can ask questions, and at the December regular meeting, we would be voting on a site selection for this property. And so while we're extending this technically because we have to in the plan, it's not off of our radar, and we'll be taking it up in an expeditious manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Godey. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Mr. Tapman.
Thank, Mike keeps taking my comments.
Ms. Dyson.
Okay, so that, that clarifies what I was trying to say on the last item. But, so with that understanding, then I can support this, it's just that, in the way that it was written, it, some people were thinking that we were gonna put it off for a year, up to a year, and, or six months, and the land is going away, and so we, there is a sense of urgency to handle this. And so with that schedule in mind, and also with the assurance that I've been given that going forward, items will come to the board and then go to the oversight instead of the opposite. So with all of that, I can support this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, comments from the audience? I think I went to the audience, I'm back at the board. Madam Secretary. The item carries. Our next item for consideration is item D8. It is a resolution for the East Spanish Parish School Board Youth Advisory Council. It is a consideration of a request to adopt the resolution to create the East Spanish Parish School Board Youth Advisory Council. So, when, when, I'll, once I read the resolution, I'll ask for a second, but I just wanted to, for a point of clarity. The spirit of this, this resolution is really to, I believe, get us back to like our primary, what should be our primary focus in our district, and that's the students. I believe that this Student Advisory Council will uplift student voice and give us an opportunity to have students a part of the process as we continue to make decisions on their behalf. So I'll read the resolution and then entertain a second. Whereas a formal request has been submitted to the East Spanish Parish School Board on November 5th, 2020, 2020, to create a Youth Advisory Council composed of a student member from each district selected through an application process, selected Youth Advisory Council members would then vote upon a non-voting student member, board member, to join the board and represent student voice with the support of community stakeholders, teachers, and students. Whereas East Spanish Parish School Board Statement of Principles lists four values: We owe our students, we believe in our students, we're focused on our student improvement, and we rely on our community. A Youth Advisory Council with a non-voting student board member would uphold and attack these values, creating a greater board accountability and community input. It would create a positive and inclusive culture, enhance student opportunity to succeed, drive progress through collaboration, teamwork, and accountability, and engage the community. Where it is the responsibility of the East Spanish Parish School Board to commit to fostering civic engagement, sending concurrent Resolution 79, request each local public school board to provide for a high school student interaction with the board in an informative advisory and non-voting capacity. East Spanish Parish School Board is prepared to commence the creation of a Youth Advisory Council with a non-voting student board member upon a majority vote of the board by requesting the approval of the current board members to commit to the timeline, taking steps toward the formation of a Youth Advisory Council. Now there be a resolve by the East Spanish Parish School Board in a regular, duly sessioned meeting, convene that the board is directed to pursue and complete the following actions by January 31st, 2021. East Spanish Parish School Board approved the formation of a Youth Advisory Council. The committee should be comprised of, but is not limited to, the following: one member of the student from each district, two school board members. The outs, the onboarding and offboarding process and schedule should be approved, created, and rolled out to select and onboard Youth Advisory Council members by February 2021, committee of the whole meeting. Each person, member, will commit to advertise to the Youth Advisory Council application and inform students about the application process. From December to January, one student from each district will be selected for the Youth Advisory Council. the Youth Advisory Council, onboarded, and then the Youth Advisory Council Board members will elect their student board member, non-voting representative. The first Youth Advisory Council and the student board member will serve throughout this 2021-2022 school year, and their offboarding process will be complete by May 2022. Be it resolved that the two board members in that designated will provide a full update, update on the progress regarding this matter to the January Committee of the Whole Meeting and evidence of appropriate steps of the completion of the, to the March Regular Board Meeting. Certificate I hereby certify the foregoing resolution for the East Spanish Parish School Board. And I will move this item. Seconded by Ms. Ware Jackson. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Mr. Tapman?
Thank you, Vice President Howard. I, I want to just get a sense of what it, I, I read the resolution a couple of times, but I want to get a sense of what it looks like. In other words, how does it work? So, I'm going to ask a couple of questions, but they're not like locked-in questions. You'll get a sense of what I'm looking for. So, if you have, you know, each school board member selects a student from their district, there's a Youth Advisory Council, one person actually sits at the board dius. If they bring, if they bring things to the board, or if they ask for consideration, do they have the same rights and privileges as a school board member? In other words, can they ask the president to put something on the agenda and it be put on the agenda? And then, the further question is, is that, if that one person who is that sort of representative of the whole council, do they have to go back to the, all of the members from the each district before they get that approved to bring forward? So, you know, I want to, I want to, I want to bring a, you know, to make lunch, you know, three hours long, do they have to go back to, I'm, I'm kind of kidding, but I'm also serious. Do they go back to that Youth Advisory Council and say, hey, I want to bring this to the board? And then, they have the ability to bring it to the board? Or, do they, once they're elected, do they act independently? And then, I, I do want to get a sense of what it looks like from a dius standpoint. Are they going to be sitting at the dius with us? Do they come in and make a report? That was where the, sort of, some of the details that I had some questions about.
Yeah. So, so in my mind, it would be great if they sat at the dius with us. It's not a absolute requirement of them to be on the dius with us. The purpose really is for, to have them a part of the process. So, if they, there is something that the Student Advisory Council decides that they just think should be an agenda item, they wouldn't have the option to just put it on the agenda item. That's something that can bring to us as a board. It's really an access point to the board to make sure that they are involved in the process. So, they would know, they would, I would, whoever would send out the agenda to them ahead of time. And so, if there were things that they wanted to talk about through the agenda from a student's perspective, they could just like the public come in, they will have an opportunity to present that information.
Okay. And I, that sounds like what maybe I thought it would be. So, would they be meeting once a month to, because they would have to get into some sort of rhythm with us, right?
Yep. So, the goal would be to have them meet the Tuesday prior to our board meeting, Tuesday or Wednesday prior to, because they already have, the agenda would be present, they would have all of the opportunity to look through the agenda. That's also flexible. The, the goal is really, the spirit to formulate the committee and then have conversations with the board and with the students to, to work out those logistical intricate details around like how it would actually work. But, we didn't want to formalize so much of it because we also want them to also create what, how much they want to be a part of the process.
Sure. So, and that, and those are, I appreciate your answers to that. When you said the Tuesday before, is that like two days before the meeting or the week before?
So, preferably the two. And me and April was working through this like, the, the right time, so preferably the Tuesday before our meeting, because the board, the agenda is already out, they have an, and it won't be a long time to review it, but we can change that if the rhythm seems too short, if they feel like they need to provide more input.
So, the Tuesday before the Committee of the Whole or the regular meeting?
Committee of the Whole.
Okay.
Mr. Howard, I think you had said maybe the Tuesday between the COW and the regular.
And the regular. Gotcha.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, sir.
Yeah, similar type comments, applaud the idea, but similar type comments around some of the details that I think may be needed to add it into here. For instance, a member of the student body from each district, does that mean that each of us as school board members would be able to select a student? Or, does it mean that just a student will be selected by some undefined process to represent each district?
Well, it's not included in this, in the application, but if you look in the board, the backup documents, it is included in that there will be an Application Review Committee. So, the Application Review Committee would go in the review process with the understanding that they will select nine members, nine diverse members onto the board that represents our district. If there is not a representative from each district that applies, the spirit is to have a nine-member Student Advisory Council.
And, and who selects the Application Review Committee?
The Application Review Committee is a part of the, the backup document. So, that could be whomever volunteers from this board to be a part of the, the Application Review Committee. If whoever wants to be a part of the process can be a part of the process. With the person being that I brought the resolution, I would be one of the working board members in my mind, and any other board members who are welcome to be a part of the process. It's not, this literally, the spirit of this is not to include or be exclusive of anyone. It's, it's to uplift and, and grant student voice. So, if people want to be a part of the process, I welcome that opportunity to be a part of the process and work through those details of like what, what people believe should be the, the review committee. But, it's included in your backup document.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Dyson?
So, I, I read the backup document and was, it was interesting to see that in, in an example, there was a, one of the student leaders was from a private or parochial, I believe, school. And then, as I thought about this, I thought, well, that would be a, a great voice engagement piece, too, because the example included that individual as being someone that helped to lead, and I think it would be a valuable voice. So, I think I could support this if every board member was able, and that way, they would have, they would check availability, they would have already spoken with the student and gotten the agreement on, okay, you're going to need to be present at this many meetings minimum. You know, this is going to be how it works. And they've already kind of committed to it, and then, they are appointed by each of us. And then, so that, you know, some board members don't even have a high school in their district. And so, you know, it would give those board members the, the latitude to choose someone from the community. It could be from one of the other schools in, in our district, but it wouldn't be restrictive of that. If they don't have a high school, they might choose something else. And I think it would be valuable to hear all of that. I don't, I, I think that if those things were changed in the motion, that I could be supportive of it.
Well, as the bring of the motion, I'm going to, I, I think that it's, it's a good idea to include, to make this about board appointing selected board members. The, the backup documents clearly state that the Application Review Committee will be comprised of people who work in the system, so people within the district office, board members, as well as former Youth Advisory Council members, to help making sure that we're thinking about all of the things as we select this process. I do not believe that private students should be included in the East Spanish Parish School Systems Student Advisory Council. I don't think that the, the private school voice is anything that we, we, we deal with private schools in a way that there are services that we have to render as a district. But, I don't think that we should eliminate an opportunity for our students who go to school within the East Spanish Parish, whether public charter or whatever, to be a part of this process. So, I don't think that, that is a, is a good motion and spirit. And, and really what I think is that eventually this becomes something that schools and students elect themselves, and it's no longer appointment or application by board, it's actually literally student voice. I think that this would just initially get it kicked off, and it would give students an opportunity to really engage in the civic process. So, I mean, I, I appreciate the feedback, but I don't think that it's, this is the, the, the place for it. So, thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Comments from the audience?
So, Raymond Almond, 12517, Ireland Avenue. My board member decided to leave the meeting, so I had to come. And, you know, this is about student voice. Me and Tramell said it pretty clearly. I mean, you got 40,000 students. We have some genius students. I mean, these kids are going through, they're thriving, very hard environments, and they're doing what they need to do. And y'all got to listen to them. Like, these kids, you know, they really, you know, we're dealing with 2020, but we wasn't dealing with this as kids. And so, they're dealing with a lot. And for y'all to be constantly taking a lot of time, you know, for simple stuff like, can a student sit on a dius? You know, that's crazy. I mean, these kids are, these kids are struggling. They're sticking with EBR schools rather than going to a charter or whatever you're scared of. And, you know, whether they're stuck here, whether they're choosing to be here, they're here. Y'all need to listen to them. This is a very simple way to do it. And so, I ask that you support this motion. It's only five of y'all here. And so, you know, have a good night.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the audience? Seeing none. Back to the board. Oh, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Vice President Howard. I appreciate seeing this at the board level. We've, we've spoken about this for a long time. I've had conversations with board members over the years and, and, you know, we thought about doing this, but there's always something that comes up. You know, there's always some bigger fish to fry. And with everything that's going on, you know, this was probably on the back burner. I appreciate you working on this during the summer. And I just wanted to make the point that, you know, our kids are all over the district. You know, we've got kids from areas that don't have high schools in that particular area, but they are at, at other schools. And I believe that if we got some focus, like in the case of, of the area where Ms. Dyson is from, there are kids that live there that go to other high schools. And I think if, if we could, if we, if we could do a concerted effort to reach out to those kids, then that way, the area that doesn't have a high school that's sitting right there in that district would still, that board member would still be satisfied with some representation from that area if we could somehow choose someone that maybe lives in that area but doesn't go to school in that area, which is typical of most of the district. You know, my kids live in Melrose Place, or lived in Melrose Place and didn't go to school, didn't go to high school in, in that area. Went to McKinley and Baton Rouge High and Tara. And so, you know, it's not uncommon that we, we wouldn't have representation from that particular school that's in that, that's in a district, that's in the voting district that, the voting district may not have a particular high school, but we can always find representation, just the way that the district is made up. And the fact that our kids are all over the district because of all of the services that we provide. So, I would encourage us to move forward with this. And as we mentioned before, you know, it's not everything, all the i's and all the t's are, are not dotted and crossed, but we will get there. And I think it's a great start. So, I would appreciate support for this item.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. And I would just say one last thing regarding that particular thing. Again, the, the ultimate spirit of this resolution is to uplift student voice. We sit on this dius week after week after week after week, making decisions on behalf of students, but not with students. The best way to get buy-in from students within your district is to make them feel like they are being heard. And I believe, I strongly believe that this is an opportunity to allow students and parents who choose East Spanish Parish School System to have a voice on this board. As great as it sounds, if I'm a student in East Spanish Parish, I will not get invited to U-High's board to talk about what my perspective is about what's happening at U-High. So, why is it fair for a U-High student, or whatever school they may attend, to come to our board to provide perspective about student experience in East Spanish Parish School System? So, I'll just leave it with that. I appreciate the, the questions and the engagement in, in this particular resolution. So, Madam Secretary. I'm sorry. Let's see. Mr. Goddard?
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of quick comments. I applaud Mr. Howard for bringing this forward. I think it's a, it's a good thing. In the spirit of not letting perfect get in the way of good, I'm going to support this. I think there are a few things that need to still be worked out. But, I also think that some of these things may be worked out as we go along, that we don't have to wait to have it perfect. I, I do want to point out to our citizen, Mr. Almond, that charter schools, at least our charter schools are public schools, high schools. So, those students would be eligible to sit on this board because they are part of our public high school system. And I would also say, being at the last meeting where I had an experience where, where only five members present, I would not like to see this motion defeated and then not be able to be brought back up for another 60 days. So, if anyone on the board is, is going to vote against this, I would wish they would put a substitute motion to defer or to recommend to the commi, to the regular board meeting without recommendation as opposed to letting this motion fail. Because I do think it would need to come up before the entire board, and I don't think it's something that we need to delay for 60 days. So, with that, I, I will support this bill and this motion, and we'll see where it goes.
Seeing no additional requests to speak from the board. Ms.?
Yeah, I'll speak briefly to this. Just a reminder to the board, this does, this does grow out of a, a resolution from the Regular Session 2015 by the Senate wherein there was a move to encourage school boards to engage students and to encourage civic engagement. So, I just want to make sure, just to kind of help us reorient and remember kind of the spirit of this whole thing is to engage students. I want to say that. And number two, one other option to help solve this problem is, you know, you could vote for this resolution and also ask to be brought back to the board for final approval in some form as to the form and the steps, et cetera, to avoid having to wait 60 days for a potential failure by vote. So, consider that as well. Maybe amending to have the, the model brought back to the board for final approval. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Shemlin. Seeing no additional comments or questions?
I wonder why he doesn't see mine?
I, I don't see. It's not appearing on my thing. Ms. Dyson?
So, I'd like to put a substitute motion out on the table that I've been in wholeheartedly supporting a youth committee and an advisory person on our board. And I want to see active engagement from our youth. I, I would like to put the substitute motion again. I will reiterate some of my concerns. And I'd like it to be that the entire community is included in this, and at the very least, that it won't be a committee who accepts the applications, but yet, an appointment by school board members. And so, each board member will be able to choose someone that they, has agreed that they can commit to this and work with our principals and, you know, get recommendations, and then the board member will appoint the person. So, that's my substitute motion, that that change would be made, so that each board member could appoint... So that each board member could appoint one student to this advisory board. Thank you.
I don't accept.
It's a second.
That was, that was a substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
Yeah. I believe there's a second needed for the substitute motion.
Yes.
Wait, I need to get the rest of the, Ms.?
Each board member will appoint one member to this youth advisory council at the beginning of each school year or something to that effect. So it would remove this other step of having a committee and who reviews and all of that. It would be an appointment that would be in honor for that student. So I'd just like to make that one change. Also, while y'all are working on that, I think it'd be really great because I think the board member then could, you know, engage with a student on a year-round basis. I think it would be a very positive experience for the student.
Substitute motion to adopt the resolution with the amendment that each board member to appoint a member to the youth council each year.
We need a second for that substitute motion. So there's no second for the substitute motion, so we return to the original motion on the floor.
Madam Secretary.
Please vote. A motion fails.
Thank you. Moving on to item D-10. It is a consideration of request for the approval of the following policies. Policy DDJD, compensation and expense. Policy EGA, staff insurance coverages. Some move by Ms. Goethe. Second by Mr. Tattman.
I'd like to speak to this one for a second. This revises some of the vesting policies and our health insurance policies for retirees or people who leave the district. A couple of things is this changes nothing for current employees. This would only change for employees beginning their employment after January 1st, 2021. And it brings us more in line with other plans around us, particularly Office of Group Benefits in Ascension Parish and Livingston Parish. And it also puts a little more distance between us and unfunded liabilities. Today, our current system has provisions where you could work for this district for 10 years and then receive retiree benefits for the rest of your life. That benefit can be worth well over a quarter of a million dollars. And none of that liability is funded as we go forward. It is funded simply by money coming from the students in the future. So this is fiscally responsible and is still competitive because it brings us much more in line with other areas. We still have the ability to receive up to 100% coverage as an employee, whereas Office of Group Benefits and other areas around us stop at 75%. So it is still generous, just not as generous as what we have today in trying to address some of the ongoing unfunded liabilities that we incur as a district. So with that, I encourage us to accept this resolution. Oh, I also, I also have covered this with both the LEA and the, was it AFT? And have received, I covered it with both of them in several in-person meetings and in phone calls and have received no negative feedback from either of those groups. So I'm not trying to put words in their mouth saying they endorsing it. All I'm saying is I've received no negative feedback from either group. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goethe. Mrs. Tattman.
Thank you, Vice President Howard. Has there been a motion and a second on this yet?
Yeah.
Motion and a second, okay, good. Yeah, look, I think we need to have this conversation because it has to do, it probably will impact us less as school board members, but future school boards and how they manage their dollars and how we begin to mitigate some of these costs. So I appreciate the work that you've done, Mike, to bring this forward. And I guess, sort of like the last agenda item, I'd like to have a conversation at a full board meeting when we can discuss this and really couch it against what our long-term liabilities look like for retirees, for anybody who's worked in the system. And I want to just reiterate, this is prospective only, this, okay, all right. Thank you, Vice President Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Tattman. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. So for me, I would, it's really a challenge to think about like the vesting years for employees because I look at it as like a competitive edge for the district. When I think about like increasing that, like for new teachers, like it's really hard to get them retained. And so when you think about the benefits of teaching with the level of salaries that we pay, I think that benefits is one of the drawing factors to us keeping teachers. So I kind of struggle with extending the time. It's, unless we can show that there will be a substantial amount of savings from the district perspective. Like, if you can tell me, like, if we change this, we are going to save $5 billion over 10 years. Like, that's something that I can support. I would ask or make a substitute motion to move this with our recommendation for further, for further details to be given as it relates to budgeting, as it relates to all of those things, so that we can get a better understanding of what this actually, a long-term substantial impact this has for the district. So that would be my only suggestion. Oh, well, I mean, if you accept the friendly amendment, I would.
I'll accept the friendly amendment to defer without recommendation, or pass on without recommendation. Yeah, I want to have a discussion.
And the second accepts that friendly amendment, Ms. Tattman.
All right. We have a friendly amendment on the item for D-10 to remove, to defer this with our recommendation to regular board meeting. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, comments from the audience? Back to the board. Madam Secretary.
Please vote. Motion carries.
The next item for consideration is litigation. It's a consideration of request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel, in the matter of Marlene Martel Jones, Jr. versus Markeela Gorham individually and on behalf of their minor child versus the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board in Park Forest Elementary. Suit number 679071, 19JDC Parish of East Baton Rouge Parish. And to provide for related matters, there's a possibility that there will be an executive session under the provisions of the Rezana revised statute 4217A2 to discuss the following matter. Marlene Martel Jones, Jr. and Markeela Gorham individually and on behalf of their minor child versus the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board in Park Forest Elementary School. I'll also move, I'll move. Second by Mr. Tattman. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Comments from the audience? Back to the board. Madam Secretary.
Please vote. Ms. Dyson. Motion carries.
The motion carries. The next item is item E-1. It's the announcement of meetings. The regular board meeting will be scheduled to be held on November 19th, 2020 at 5:00 PM at the Professional Development Center. The committee of the whole meeting will be held on December 3rd, 2020 at the Professional Development Center. At this time, I call this meeting to be adjourned. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Vice President Howard. I was trying to get that in. I know you didn't see it. I just wanted to make a comment and announce also regarding the Dialogue on Race and Education event. Our board has completed the six-week series of Dialogue on Race. And the final piece is the Day of Dialogue on November 13th. This will be a totally virtual experience. So I want to invite everyone to join us on November 13th for expert-led panels and community-centered dialogues on the critical intersection of race and education. You can choose to attend the full day of panels or select the panels that you wish to attend. And you can register at, this is a strange site, but you can also go on the Dialogue on Race Facebook page to get more information. But the website to register is bit.ly/dayofdialog2020. So we will listen, learn, and hopefully you will join the dialogue. So thank you so much. And I do want to give a shout out to Dr. Del Pitt and Dr. Aviles for being on the panel as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick point of personal privilege. I would like to acknowledge and extend condolences to the wife and family of Mr. Wayne Davis. Many of you may have known Mr. Davis. He's been a longtime supporter of volunteers in public schools, board member, treasurer. I think he was president for a while. And always was very, very active in the volunteers in public schools. I think he was one of the, I'm not certain, but I think he was one of the founders. So I just wanted to acknowledge his contributions to our students and to our community. Thank you.
And at this time, I move that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.